Are we up? Oh, my watch is off. I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Okay, everybody, please. We are, we are Facebook Live, so I apologize to our Facebook folks that live here. Noisy and carrying on. So anyways, this is a work session and it is, it is informal. So we are clearly as informal as we are today as we've ever been. So first we have, we've got a presentation, but I do want to make a couple of announcements. Our sanitation director, Chris Smiley, has asked me to remind everyone that trash pickup will be citywide on Tuesday after the holiday, after the Martin Luther King holiday on Monday. So unless there's some sort of issues associated with the weather, it will be a citywide pickup. And if you will pay attention to Starville alerts or our Starville Facebook page, then we will keep that information available to everyone as soon as we have information to put out there. So, and then also I wanted to say, just because it's fun to say, our sales tax is way up for this month, which is, which is a wonderful thing. So people were shopping for Christmas, I'm guessing. People were shopping for Christmas. So, all right. Well, with that, we have a presentation. We try to, you know, provide people information, the board information on things that usually are department head related, but in this case, Mr. Taggart is going to be here and give us a little update on what the partnership has done and what it's doing. I know Alderman Beatty and Alderman Rupp are both on separate subcommittees or subsections of the partnership. So they're kind of aware of things, but I think this is an opportunity for Mr. Taggart to give us kind of an overview for those who don't necessarily stay in the know on, on that. So please go right ahead.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the chance to visit with you. I've got about 10 or 12 minutes of just updated comments that I wanted to present to you. Happy to answer any questions along the way. So just stop me if it needed. Despite the really professional looking title here, I only have a couple of slides I want to show you, but, but I did want to point some of that out. But thank you for letting me be here and just kind of give you an update on the partnership. And just as a refresher for, for some of us, you know, the, and I too myself had to go back and learn a little bit about the history of this organization and understand how it was organized, this line, those kinds of things. But the partnership was born in 2000, year 2000, and the effort, at least what I found historically, was it was trying to improve communication essentially between all of our community development organizations and the, trying to improve communication between all the different organizations that are what I call community development. That's how we kind of talk about ourselves and view ourselves as a community development organization. Economic development, slightly separate, although we do have some interaction with that, but community development, the more quality of life issues and assisting the city and the county and the university with the needs that we have, we all have, and that is for the benefit of all of us. And so that's kind of the role and the organization has really, at least in my tenure, it's, we've kind of moved from the day-to-day mechanics of events to certainly those are vital. I can't overstate how important those community-related events are in our community. But also, you know, the, what makes those possible is the advocacy related to quality of life issues in our community. And the three things that we kind of lean on, and they have evolved over time, I think, from what I can tell, but the three things that we try to continually advocate for is public safety, education, healthcare, those kinds of overarching things that are so important in a community like ours, a growing, thriving community like Starville. And so a lot of what we do and a lot of that part, part of it is not necessarily directly connected to the events, but those are the things, I would, I would say to you that if we get those things wrong, we don't have those other opportunities in our community. We've got to get those things correct, you know, make sure that we're working toward that. So I spend a lot of time on that and just the communication part of it too, between the university, city and county, just trying to, trying to make sure we know how we can help each of those entities for the, for the greater good. I'm going to mention, and there's the, most of you are just familiar with this, very simple, but you know, the four major components of the partnership. You've got your Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is your tourism and trying to bring people into town and utilize that 2% food and beverage tax and...
That's the one Alderman Beatty's on, right?
Yes, yes. And we appreciate, Alderman Beatty is a member of our Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. We appreciate that very much. Alderman Rupp is a member of our Starville Main Street Association. All those things take time. So we do appreciate very much your willingness to sit in on that. And it improves communication. That's not by, that's not by accident. We want the city involved in those organizations throughout this. And you'll see that the city has representative on all four of these different sectors, and that's on purpose, is to improve communication. Convention and Visitors Bureau, and that's really your, you know, your tourism component. You've got OSEO, which is the October County Economic Development Authority, and that really has more of the economic development aspect of what we do. I think that was housed internally with the partnership years ago, but they found a better fit in working. And we do some, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that too. And then Starville Main Street Association, that's where you see a lot of events, as well as with the Chamber, which is your traditional Chamber activities, business support, trying to, you know, trying to, trying to make sure that we have an environment that's business friendly in our community. And I want to talk about that first too. Really, the, the approach for the Chamber within the organization is all about what a business needs. You know, healthcare or, or wellness and fitness businesses that come to our community have different needs than manufacturing, but yet we have the same kind of membership. And so really the approach with the Chamber is all about what a business needs. How can we help you be successful in Starville? Because if you're successful, everyone benefits. And so that's really, that's what dictates, we have lots and lots of benefits to being a member of the Chamber, but really the first thing we ask you is when you come through, and Hunter Harrington does a great job with this, she's our Chamber Director, when they come through, what do you need from us? What do you need to be successful in Starville? And every business is very unique, so they have different needs. It could be traditional promotion and advertisement, we can help you with that. It could be networking, relationship, it could be more of an advocacy side. We have a lot of our larger donors that they don't necessarily need advertisement, promotion. They just want to see Starville benefit and to do well. And as Starville does well, they do well. And I'm thinking about the banks, for example. They, they contribute to our organization. They know we've got to get public safety, education, healthcare, we've got to get those things correct. And if they, if we do, their community grows, their business grows. So we have that aspect of it. The, the Chamber today has about 590 members. Last year, in 2023, early 2023, we, and it does fluctuate, there's no question. You have businesses come, you have businesses go. We have about 590 members. Last year, we surpassed the 600 mark for the first time in the organization. We've got about a year in and year out, again, that fluctuation. We've got about a 90% retention rate, which is outstanding. Anything in the Chamber world, I'm told, with the experts, above 75% is considered outstanding. So I think we really, I think Hunter and the team do a really good job of making sure that they not only, you know, take your check, for example, as a member, but there's follow-up. There's, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to, you've got to make sure those businesses have all the resources they need, and they change over time. So you have a lot of activity there. We've seen a lot of growth.
Mike, before you go, a five-year growth trend, that how much, I mean, we used to be at four something and now we're at 590 something, or is there, has it been that much growth? Or can you project, have you projected that?
Again, it does fluctuate. You have some that come and go, but you know, in, for example, in 2018, we had somewhere around the 500 mark.
Okay.
So, you know, to be generous, we're probably somewhere between 15 and 20% in growth. And that's in number of businesses. That's not in revenue related to those businesses, but that's really important because that's a very big number when you talk about a sheer growth in the number of businesses that are engaging with your traditional Chamber organization.
Well, and growth in the community itself, so.
Well, that's exactly. It's a direct reflection of what's going on in the community, is that growth. If you have that kind of engagement. And we believe firmly too, that, you know, you, again, you go back to what does that one business need? What do you need? And whether we do it or not, we try to figure out a way in order to make, because again, we just want to be successful, and in turn, they'll remain a member. We have a lot of, we, we do a lot with non-members. My friend Hunter Harrington, if she were here, she would throw something at me right now. But, but it's really important to foster those kinds of relationships and hope that they will join eventually and be a part of the bigger conversation. We do a lot of that. Seen growth in all sectors over the last four years, and that's what I can, I came, I came on board for you in March and January of 2020, about six weeks before the world changed a little bit. So 2020, 2021 were really odd in our organization. We were doing different things, trying to adapt and be a part of that. We really board, in 2022 started to normalize. We started to see a return to normal function with a community development organization. But all sectors have increased, particularly health and wellness categories. And you can look around our town and community, you can see all the different little spa-related businesses that are very important. And I do think that's kind of a direct, was indirect reflection of, of the pandemic in some ways. We've seen more of an emphasis in that, and a commercialization of wellness products. You know, you've seen a lot of that. Let's see. We, we do have a small role in entrepreneurship. We have a lot of businesses, we work closely with the E Center, trying to send on a regular basis. We send a lot of small business owners to the Small Business Development Center, to direct them to the E Center. We have a lot of involvement there. We do some training. This is all again under Chamber-related activities. We did 24 training exercises last year. We tried, on average, tried to get in at least a couple per month. But it ranges from, we did a, one of the more successful ones we had last year, Still Room to Grow, was our bail series, bankers, accountants, insurance, legal. And so, you know, we believe that each business needs, at some point in the first five years of their existence, they're going to need, or immediately, they're going to need one, one of each of those, those components. And so we try to emphasize that. That's open to the general public. Any, any business owner can participate in that, whether they're a member or not. And in turn, we think it helps build and get their interest in the organization, and eventually they become a part of it. And to give back, that's part of it. We've also, through the traditional Chamber activities, we have two efforts that are, one is we're trying to renew, which is Starville Activa Low Minority Business Alliance. And that's similar in the sense that we're trying to do more, trying to figure out and build more programming for minority business owners so that eventually they can become members of the organization. Also with our Young Professionals Group, we, we struggled for years, is my understanding, with young professionals and getting them more engaged in the business community. So what we did is we found out that the Alumni Association also struggled. We found out that the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion on campus was also struggling with their young professionals. So we brought them all together, and we have a new organization called Rise STK, which is strictly young professionals, 40 and under, or maybe 35. I'm way out of it, so it doesn't matter. But it's a, it, the whole point of that though is to put those young professionals, make sure that they feel like they have a place in the community and that they, they feel like they have their own peer network. And in turn, that builds, builds their credentials and helps them do business. And so we've worked on that. And that's again through Hunter Harrington and the Chamber activities. And she's done, she's done a great job in growing that organization. And you'll see that, that trend in some of my comments. The other one that I want to mention too, let me see if, I'm going to come back to special other taxes. So this is...
Welcome to Starkville, Mississippi's college town. Take a master class in taking it easy. Advance sociology or pursue lab-based research. There are no prerequisites in Starkville. Just show up, show out and in with yourself. Broaden your horizons and brighten your weekend. Visit Starkville.
That is an example of our tourism efforts, right? And I particularly like this because it seems like the perfect opportunity to bring the university and the community and all those assets and just shared common ground. And so this is an example of what our CBB does, a Convention and Visitors Bureau, that Alderman Beatty sits on. That's really important because we all understand the financial impact that it has in an SEC college town. While we may be the smallest of our SEC college towns from a population standpoint, it is tremendous impact on our economy. Just for example, last year, and these are probably numbers you're already aware of, we had $90 million in visitor purchase in, within the city of Starkville last year. That represents about somewhere between 12 and 13 million overall in those taxes related to visitors. That's incredibly important. About 7% of our total population works directly, these are direct jobs as relates to tourism in our community. And that's with restaurants, lodging, it's almost 1,500 people directly within the city limits, that live within the city limits, that actually work in that sector. So we all know how important, important it really is. And, you know, the 2% sales tax is vital. The CBB receives a small portion of that. In order to do just what we're talking about here, 100% of that goes toward advertisement and promotion. There's no salaries or administrative fees that are taken from, from, from our sales tax that comes to the CBB, nor is it from the tourism recovery funds. That's a viable option to use it that way, but we're pumping every bit of it, 100% into promotion and advertisement. And in turn, we, it'll, it'll, it'll pay, it'll have dividends. So I do want to mention on the lodging side, hotel occupancy, again, numbers you're probably aware of, but are worth pouting, is that hotel occupancy for 2023 was up 7% to over 61.2% total occupancy. Now think of, that's a, that's an important number to remember because that is every single hotel room in our community for every single night. That's an incredible number. The benchmark, the absolute, benchmark of excellence within the industry is 60%. And so we are above that threshold.
That doesn't count Airbnbs, right? That's just strictly hotels, right?
It does not count Airbnbs because they're not really trackable at this point, but every single hotel room that we have, you know, for every 365 nights a year. So it's important. You think about, that's every random Sunday night, that's every Christmas, everything, you know, where traditionally you're very, very slow. That's important. Your average daily rate this year in 2023 was up just over 10% to $124.95 per night. That's an incredible rate. If you look at college towns across the sector in Southeast, you'll see that that's really high. Again, you get that 61% occupancy. And the overall revenue was up 10% to over 25 million just related to hotel occupancy. So that's important. And that in turn, you know, that feeds this kind of promotion. That's what pays and helps pay for, in addition to support from the city and the county, but that's what actually makes these kinds of advertising possible. I will say one other thing about this ad too. You know, you're probably not going to see this very often because we live here. A lot of people say, well, I haven't seen that ad. I want to see that. And we have it on our website and it's available there, but you're not going to see it in your digital footprint because, you know, we're not trying to attract you, you are already here. And so, but if you go to the alumni markets, which is what we've done, is we've taken our ads and we overlay them where we have those larger organizations within the Alumni Association. And that's Memphis, that's obviously the Jackson and Gulf Coast area, but Memphis, Birmingham, Atlanta, Houston, Texas is a huge alumni base for, for the university. And this appeals to those, you know, that's the kind of folks that we're trying to attract and to bring into town more often than they already come. So that's really important. We also work through the CBB, work with the cities of the SEC. We do a lot of regional efforts. We, our own Paige Hunt with the organization worked with our counterpart, the School of North, and they developed, they, here in state, they developed the organization for the cities of the SEC. And that's now a regional marketing effort. What that means, where that really, where it really means anything is when we go, like for example, we're playing in Baton Rouge, then our friends and colleagues in Baton Rouge are promoting to us. They're telling us where you can stay. And likewise, we're doing the same with our colleagues from Baton, our friends from Baton Rouge when they come up for a ballgame. And we're feeding them information. They're helping us get our information to our customer. And so that's really important. And then also I want to mention that through the CBB, we helped with the promotion of Cornerstone, which is so important, has so much potential going forward. And we think it's going to just have tenfolded in the media. We really do. Work with Brandon, he's a member of the CBB Board. Thank you for doing that. But that's on purpose. He's there because we want to make sure we've got clear communication with your CBB Board. There's other, other things here too. Tourism recovery, that's obviously been a big issue. All those funds are going toward promotion and advertisement for Starville and the city's college town. We're grateful for the legislative assistance that we've gotten on that. Again, we don't use any of that for administrative needs or salaries. It goes strictly to promotion. So that's important. The other thing that I want to, let's see, oh, I want to mention this too. So part of the CBB is also our retirement program. Starville is one of 12 certified retirement communities in the state. This is their new statewide logo, Welcome Home Mississippi. Those of us that are, that are older don't appreciate being called retirees anymore. So they've changed their, kind of their approach. But Welcome Home Mississippi is, is the new statewide and regional and national kind of campaign for retirement, trying to recruit people retired to our community. And that's so important too, because they, we spend a lot of time doing that. We're in the middle of, of building a brand-new campaign for retirement for Starville too. Because those not only, you know, we know we already have, and this is a very conservative number, we know we already have somewhere in the, in the vicinity of about 2,600 weekend game day homes in our community. And those are people that are working, living elsewhere, but they come here for ballgames. Well, we want them to retire here. We work really very closely with the Alumni Association, for example. They've been a tremendous partner too, because they have information we don't have. They know how to reach out to everyone who graduated in 1982 and before, right? They can specifically target our, you know, our graduates of 1982 and before, who are either retired or thinking about it and have some ideas. And so that's why we work so closely with the university on that, is because we're just trying to recruit those people who have a natural nostalgia for being here in Starville. And so that's really important. Just a couple of things real quick. Main Street Association, Paige Watson is our Main Street Director, and most all of you probably have worked with her. She does a fantastic job. I want to talk about, just mention just about the growth of that organization. I think it does matter. In 2018, roughly, that organization had about 58, 59 members. Today, it's up to 85. And those are Main Street located members. That shows you it kind of grows within that. That's a tremendous 25% or so, something like that, within that. And the reason for that though, is so much activity. That's what we talked about in our shop. You show the work and the membership and the involvement, the engagement and the support comes. And so Paige has done an outstanding job with that. All the events that if you've attended them, you know that they're well done. A lot of attention to detail, just really well supported. Each event has either grown, and if we identify an event that's not growing, chances are it's not with us anymore because it's not fulfilling that need. And we've had to do some of that too, especially the pandemic gave us a little bit of an opportunity to look through that and do that. You know, they, Main Street had over 100 events last year, and those are events you're probably familiar with. That includes a farmer's market, but also hunk and palooza, the downtown and sundown type events. She and her team, she just does a really good job of organizing all the volunteers that come with that. Facade grants, I want to mention this too, this is important. And it's a testament to the Main Street Association because each of the last three years, they have tried to ramp up their involvement in providing grants to Main Street businesses for facade improvements, which improves the entire corridor. I think last year there were 10 recipients. They've actually increased their funding for Main Street facade grants this year going forward. So that's really important. There's just some small businesses that while it's on their list and it's, it's important, it's a priority, it's, sometimes it's difficult. So it provides funds to actually improve the Main Street corridor and what it actually aesthetically looks like. That's really important. And then I'll just say this too, that on Main Street, the, you know, each year, I don't know if, you may not notice, but each year, our Main Street Association garners all kinds of statewide awards. And I just say that simply bragging on them, yes, but, but each and every year, they are recognized throughout the state. We're one of six circle of excellence members within the main statewide Main Street Association, and that means you're in the top echelon. The very, you know, there's different levels of being, there's a couple of different levels of being a Main Street organization. There's about 40 statewide or so. We are in that very top echelon where you can see the involvement, you can see the engagement, you can measure it. That's always important. And so again, Paige Watson and her team do a, do a great job at, at those events and what it means to be a part of that. And that's where we take the day-to-day activities and we try to translate them into the more advocacy-related issues. Again, if we do the advocacy aspect of, of our community properly, which y'all deal with every day, and we appreciate it. If we do those things right, then it enables the growth throughout, whether it's on the Main Street Association, or the CBB, or, or OSEO, and I want to mention that last. October County Economic Development Authority, Mayor, thank you for being on that board and showing us this leadership with that. You're starting to see, for example, with North Star, the partnership's involvement with North Star is simply to try to help administratively as needed with the link and with the city and the county. The maintenance of North Star, industrial park, that's important. We're starting, you know, just with the Amazon announcement recently, we're starting to see the momentum build with that. And I think it's going to, I think it's going to start moving exponentially faster. And so we're really proud of that. OSEO's a vital partner because you don't hear a lot about it because it's kind of behind the scenes working on economic development aspects of it. And, and the link and the mayor, they all do a great job of moving those things forward, making sure that North Star has what it needs, making sure that all of our industrial sites have what they need within the community. And so we appreciate it very much. But I think those are the four different, let's see, I always say that in, that's circa 1955, somewhere in there. But you can see, you know, you can just, you, I don't have to tell this group how our community has changed so dramatically. And it's only going to get better. It's only going to be more and more business, more and more engagement, involvement. We, we, I usually throw this in just when I'm doing a presentation, just as a kind of a, a benchmark of where we've been, where we've come. We live here and we oftentimes don't notice that incremental change. But I can tell you, our office on a regular basis, people come in and they may be an alum in a lot of cases, and they go, I haven't been here in five or six years. I can't believe how much things have changed. And it's often the better, it's often the better. So that's a real testament to, to the city and the board, the good work you're doing. The partnership is just that. We, we're here to help and assist as needed. So.
You need to get a picture of today and juxtapose it with that one. Put them side by side. That'd be cool.
That would be, exactly. We can get some drone footage to take care of that. Yeah. That would be interesting. That would be interesting. That's kind of, those are my comments, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
And thank you so much, Mike, for coming out. I realize that I'm, it's one of those things that I think is important for, for us all to have an opportunity to see. But any questions of, of Mike while we've got him?
Comment?
Yeah, sure, of course.
I want to make sure we add that Chris Smiler's on the Main Street Board.
Oh, yes, I forgot that, yes.
A wealth addition. And the Main Street Board is really helpful in being the bridge between the businesses and all the work that's going on downtown, and even some of the most diehard critics, I don't know, that run breakfast places on Main Street, have really been complimentary to the work that's been done.
Good. Well, I know that Edwards folks are working really hard to make sure that, that we're as on, on time and communicative as possible, and so, all of that, I think, is inured to our long-term benefit with the businesses and, and the Main Street folks, so greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Okay, all right. Anything, anybody else to add? And CBB, by the way, is with, working with, as you mentioned, with Parks for our upcoming year of tournament scheduling, so we're looking forward to seeing all that come to-
Absolutely. Anything we can do for both that, we've talked to Brandon, we've got a great relationship with Parks, that's just going to be a goldmine opportunity, so really forward to that.
Cool, thank you. All right, thanks again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, well, we can move into the, into the agenda. So this will be our, for our recess meeting, we've got one set of minutes, Ms. Harden and Mr. Huskison are all comfy with that? Can we look at consent for that? Okay, all right. And then we've got some employee introductions, is that right, Mr. Ashford?
Yeah.
Okay, we don't know who or how many yet.
Utilities and by far.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Anybody have anything they want to put on the agenda for posterity? Nothing? Okay. We have one public appearance, which I believe Mr. Cody has sent you the background on that, so they will be making a public appearance, but you will have that in front of you, or you should have already had the opportunity to get that from, from Mr. Burnett, so. Then, public hearings, we've got Jeremiah Dumas, Mr. Dumas will be, former Alderman Dumas, will be coming to give us his annual Smart Bus Report, as well as hold the public hearing. So that is part of their required, required activity in order to continue with that grant. And then, a public hearing on the variance for the wall size for Walmart, Mr. Haveland?
Yes, it's just Walmart's redoing their signs as part of their major remodel, and so it's just a request to exceed the, and that was recommended unanimously.
Large part because of the setback from the, from the street?
Yeah, they have an increased amount because of the setback, they're going to open that amount by about eighty square feet.
Okay, all right, okay. And that was unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, and it'll be, it'll be a public hearing, so nothing for us to do, other than be aware that we'll be doing that. And then we've got another one for a special exception, and this one is an opportunity on colors, so.
And this is for facade colors for the Empowerment Station Academy, which is on Woodville Road.
Yes.
And that was due, planned to go to commission last week, and they managed to-
Yes, which is, it's multiple, multiple colors on that, on that building. So if you haven't seen it, you might want to drive by and eyeball it. Not that you can miss it, because it's right. All right, well, that will be a public hearing also. Thank you so much. Okay, and then if, from an, from an explanation standpoint, this is an ordinance that I, I copied, or I didn't copy it, I used the template of Madison and I believe it was Vicksburg. And so, this is an ordinance that is essentially requiring retail and professional spaces that have a certain size to have security cameras in their parking lots that will give our police department an opportunity to go back and, and do some recreation if needed. I asked the chief to take a look at it, I think he had Brandon, Brandon Lovelady, take a look at it as well, Sergeant Lovelady, take a look at it. And I believe you're comfortable with the language that's in there now?
Just merely-
In particular, anything you want to highlight for the board about it?
It's just been, the suggestion's just been updated with technology, which is key to the ordinance, and it was a team, a church as well, and we coordinated with UCI and others on what they're seeing, trying to see what's said as well.
Okay. This is just one of those things, I think, goes hand-in-hand with our security cameras around town. And this is just calling for the public hearing, so this is not, this is not adopting the ordinance, as y'all know, we'll have two public hearings, but gives you an opportunity to get some feedback, and if there's anything about that ordinance that y'all want to talk about, we can, but this is calling for the public hearing to start with, so.
You say you looked at Brandon and Vicksburg?
It was Madison-
Madison.
And Vicksburg. And it's, again, it was just kind of getting that, that format, and then obviously making it our own. And Mr. Huskison has looked at it as well, so. But anyway, again, this is just calling for the public hearing, so consent for that?
Consent.
Okay. All righty. And then, Department of Business, we have a lease agreement, and this one is contingent on the acceptance of the modifications to the agreement by Air Care. And there's Mr. Lincoln, right there. Anything in particular you'd like to add to this, about this lease? Want you to give the board a little update on what, what it's about?
This, Air Care came to us, and they're looking at leasing the whole available second floor of the South Hunger to house their nurses of their helicopter pilots. And in return, once they do that, bring your helicopter over here, and then they want to build a building south of that building, build their own facility, and we have a great opportunity to come out with one of their new programs to fund this. And so, we just don't know the matching number shit, so, carry and putting all the costs together, but this is the first step, other than just to get this lease through the emphasis and get what they have, same thing, they're already leasing some, they're promising, but they're still waiting.
And where are they now, they're GTR now?
GTR.
Okay, and they're wanting to come over this way?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay.
That's the sketch that you brought. That's right, that's some of the interior of the building, the building's leased on the bottom floor, and there's going to be some shared areas, the restroom, some kitchen. And they've been here and looked at it, and both sides are the party comfortable with their family, consent.
Okay, just the details to be worked out? Okay, all right. Mr. Huskison, you looked at it as well?
Yeah.
What was that?
I said keep up the good work.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, we've, we've got what we want, and they, they've got to take a look, and hopefully they're in agreement.
Okay, consent for that?
Consent.
Okay. All righty, engineering, this is, this is part of that, you'll see the public appearance, I think our engineering group has put together a nice report for you guys that's in there. You certainly have somebody who's going to come talk to you about it, but it's not beyond putting it on consent if we're so inclined, so that's up to the board. Anybody want to hold it?
Mayor, yes, yes. I think we should, since we've got, I mean, I've read the stuff that was sent out to the board, but I think since we, in lieu of, in fact, we have Byram Construction coming as public appearance, I was be appropriate to, you know, in the same meeting, just a few items later on the agenda for us to approve a bid for the other construction company, without taking that under advisement, and us at least, I mean, maybe, we just need to look at this, and, I mean, executive session to me would be not necessarily where we'd want it, but I mean, some discussion on, on the information that we got and the reasoning for, you know, the decision we're making.
Yeah.
Okay. What do you, Council, what do you suggest?
I think it's fine, it won't hurt a thing to hear from them. Cody and them have done a good job of checking with outside third parties to take a look at it and get some garber, for example, and so, pretty comfortable with, with recommending it the way we, what we've done, but hearing from them, there's no, no downside to that.
But at the same time, in the same, in the same meeting, I would think that we might want to at least take the, I guess, the resolution to, or the consideration resolution to approve the competitor's contract off the table till we've heard from Byram, and whatever talk about it to the board.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we won't, we won't put it on consent, and we'll hear from Byram, but I don't see pulling it from the agenda for, for decision.
But I mean, I, I looked, I mean, I guess, I got the information from what sent to us, and I understand reason for that, but, and maybe this is not the venue to discuss why that was, that one was, but I, I think, at the very least, it's a half-million-dollar contract, and I think that we ought to, I think we should discuss as a board and understand clearly, and nobody's been in contact with me, it's just me, that we should, couldn't have, have our questions vetted on why the low bidder was, is, bids being thrown out, you know, is being, you know, not agreed on, and that we're taking a second bid. Not that there's, there's not that much difference in the bids, but just, just a process, and I have a question, too, about that. And maybe this is not the venue, the format for doing, probably isn't, but we need to discuss it, maybe we need to discuss it in, in a session or something like that, or see, maybe something, and then we'd come out of it or something.
No, I understand, and that's fine, and if you want to, Cody is here, and he can, he can talk about it, but we can also talk about it again-
He does, it doesn't matter, I just, I thought that, that the information we have is really good, and if we had a little more information about the, the pricing and the way they stated, what they stated, that the, the board, their, their, their bid, you know, I mean, I just want to know a little more about it.
Sure, okay, right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just leave it on consent, and we'll discuss it Tuesday night.
Okay, we'll do that.
And it, to have the option, to end the discussion, to take it under advisement to the second meeting in, in the month, if, if that, I mean, is, is it, is it so time-sensitive that we couldn't do that?
Well, I think it's appropriate for us to move forward with it, but that'll be-
I mean, we, maybe not, I'm not saying we do that, I'm just saying that we, we'd have the option to be able to do that.
Well, you can always do that, but I think it's probably, you know, moving forward with it is necessary from a, from a construction standpoint. But, again, that's, that's a board decision, and Cody can be ready to respond to that on Tuesday night.
I mean, I think all the information's pretty much public, it's a bid process.
Yeah.
But I think the discussion is, probably needs to be held at the meeting for transparency and talked through. It may not be pleasant the whole time, but I think it's, it's a job.
Sure, yeah, and I don't think it, yeah, I don't think executive session is necessary, because it is very, it's very straightforward what's there, so.
Well, I know they're going, they're coming with a, to, to address the board, and they've got, they, they have a legitimate reason for being awarded the contract, and so, I, that all needs to be brought and put on the table Tuesday night before we make a decision and everything, everybody, including the public, needs to be pretty clear about the reason we're making a decision.
Sure. Okay, absolutely. Well, it won't, will not be on consent, and we will move, we will have that discussion on Tuesday night, so. Claim stock it, obviously will stay off. And then, acceptance of the financials, any reason not to, anything about?
Consent.
Okay, consent for those. Fire Department, we have a grant for firehouse, firehouse subs, and this is, is this a matching, is there a match to this one? This is not a match, okay, so a hundred percent? Okay, so, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay, and then, hiring Martin Gibson, this is a-
It's a replacement.
Replacement position.
Consent.
Okay, consent for that. Two hundred Microsoft Windows, I'm sorry, Windows user licenses, easy for me to say. Anything about that, Mr. Clements, that you want to share?
No, I have just, just usual license emergency.
Required, required for us to continue to communicate? Okay, consent for that one? And then, Parks, this is sole source quote, "to allow us to remotely control the lights at JL, JL King Park," which is a very positive, that's a cost-saving measure for us, so. Consent for that one?
Yeah, we talked about it.
And then we have more grants. Chief, I believe these are fairly straightforward, so unless there's a question, we've got Traffic Services Enforcement Grant, and that's a hundred percent reimbursable, consent for that one?
Yes.
And then, Alcohol and Drug Impair Driving Enforcement Grant is also a hundred percent reimbursable.
Hundred percent.[1718.65]